I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first order of business is public comment to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chairperson. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. Do we have any public comment?
Let's get it going.
Hi, David.
How are you?
I'm well.
David Mader, 61 Larkin Road. You know you're old when the print has to be that big. You can read that from here, right? Obviously, I'm here to talk about Larkin Road, but I also really want to address the article that was in the paper, in the Daily News, last week about the reopening of Larkin Road. Because I was one of the people that was quoted numerous times, and I felt after reading the article that I needed to publicly address the message of the article and how I was involved. The article did touch on both sides of the issue, from the residents to the town officials. It did seem to imply that the neighborhood is happy with the status of the dead end and would like the gate put up in the culvert to create some sort of gated community, which has absolutely never really been brought up by us. In my conversation with the reporter, the majority of my conversation with him is focused totally on safety, safety for the residents, and especially for the children, the pets, and wildlife needs to be considered, too. The reporter did attempt to get me to say that we wanted this because we liked the way it is for almost nine years, and making it a private gate community would be in our best interest, or selfishly in our interests. In fact, the neighborhood has always wanted emergency access and access for plows and other DPW needs. That is why we proposed the gate that will create no time delay or delay issues with anyone authorized with access. When the discussion began, both sides were focused on safety. We all agreed that safety is the number-one issue, but what is proposed here is not a reopening of a public way that is an existing prior. Instead, it will hit a high-traffic shortcut with unlimited weight capacity. That changes the road, the neighborhood, and the quality of life of the neighbors on that street. One moment can change a lifetime; that moment can come at any time, and I think we need to really kind of start to pay attention to that. I'm living on that road every day. Just the trucks going to the construction site, they're heavy, they can't stop, they take up the whole road. So, I did speak with some firefighters at Central Street and asked how many emergency calls they get in a year on Larkin Road, and they said a few times a year. It was no huge amount. So, you're worried about the access with no delay for a few times a year and ignore the elevated danger that will happen daily from constant traffic from any vehicle of any size or any rate. Heavy trucks cannot stop quickly, and that's the bottom line. Just some quick stats to back up our thinking. There are 31 homes on Larkin Road; 17 of the 31 have been built since 1985; 10 of the 31 have been sold since the culvert's closed. That's a third of the families on this road purchased their home with the belief that it was a dead end, as marked on top of the street. Now, I know we've had that discussion a million times, but people did buy homes with a dead end sign of the industry. Now, when the Georgetown side of the culvert, nine homes closest to the culvert, were built after 1983. Now, you're going to be adding 10 more homes. I point this out because the case law opinion that we were handed by the town to support opening the road cited laws from the 1800s. As I detect, there is only one home that was on Larkin Road in the 1800s. That was built in 1690. It doesn't look that old, does it? So, since 1690 until today, that culvert has never allowed to access over five tons. Now, it's going to be unlimited. That was not the original intent of the culvert. This will dramatically change the makeup of the road forever. Therefore, this is not reopening a public way and restoring what was there before. Instead, it is creating a whole new situation, in our opinion, and potentially elevates safety risk that has never existed. The point is, things change. What worked in the 1800s and the 1900s, or even in 2014, might not work today. We have the opportunity to work together and do this thing right and make it safe for everybody. And I want to be clear that this is all about safety. My conversation with the newspaper was all about safety. We have a chance to do complete and total safety. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, everybody. Justin Laundergin, 38 Larkin Road. I'll try and be quick. I know, Dave, it took a while. I know that Jerry Heavey had asked for this, for the Larkin Road matter, to be on the agenda tonight, and that couldn't happen, so I'll have to use this time as efficiently as I can. So, we have, for over a year, sought true compromise, collaboration, and dialogue. The select board left the fate of Larkin Road to annual town meeting and made a promise to turn the decision over to the will of the people. And at town meeting, the people spoke, and the people's will was made very clear by a vote of 118 in favor of our proactive and collaborative solution, 58 opposed. That's two out of three votes which have since been ignored. So, what does the will of the people mean for our current select board? What does that really mean in our town? That has been the question on voters' minds since April, and the voters are watching. Indeed, this has become far, far bigger than Larkin Road. This is about honoring the vote, respecting citizen voice, and abiding by the will of the people. I want to shift now and focus on my sincere thanks, gratitude, and love. I want to thank every one of the awesome citizens from Plum Island, Old Town, and Byfield who supported the petition we launched just four days ago. My neighbors and I immensely appreciate your support, your love of our community, and your commitment to our democracy. We met and reconnected with so many wonderful and inspiring people, it was truly, truly awesome and righteous. According to Mass General Law Part 1, Title VII, Chapter 39, Section 10, "The selectmen shall call a special town meeting upon request in writing of 200 registered voters or of 20 percent of the total number of registered voters of the town, whichever number is the lesser. Such meeting to be held not later than 45 days after the receipt of such request, and shall insert in the warrant therefore all subjects the insertion of which shall be requested by said petition." I have in my hands the signatures of 306 registered Newbury voters supporting my request that the town of Newbury call a special town meeting. To my knowledge, no citizen-led special town meeting has ever been called in Newbury's 386-year history. I want to thank each of you again for supporting us in our stand, for making history, for ensuring that the will of Newbury's people is heard, that the spark of democracy endures, and that the sanctity of our rights and our vote persists. For the record, Madam Chair, please consider this receipt of our formal request for special town meeting. We have retained copies for our records. We ask that the special town meeting be held within 45 days from today, as outlined in the aforementioned law. Our article at special town meeting asks simply that the town honor the vote that passed in April and cooperate to address the people's critical safety concerns while also greatly enhancing emergency vehicle access from where it stands today. The will of the people and the vote of the people must be honored. Thank you.
So, thank you. I don't believe that the select board takes that. I believe it needs to go to the town clerk.
Okay. The law sites received by the selectmen.
Select board needs to, we will receive it from the town clerk. The clerk has to log it in and certify everything.
Verify the signatures, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's not the way, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, we'll drop it off.
Thank you.
I'll drop it off.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens' concerns tonight?
Point of order.
Mr. Rybicki, you're not part of the board. There is no order. What is it you need?
Oral communications, then, thank you.
Yeah, you can speak that way. Mm-hmm.
Jack Rybicki, I believe in assisting and helping the Larkin Road group.
Address, address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jack Rybicki, 37 Larkin Road.
Thank you.
What we found when I signed the petition myself was that it has to come, because it's a special town meeting under a special provision, it needs to come through the select board.
That's correct.
The town clerk only verifies the signature.
That's correct.
So, I believe that Justin needs to give it to you and not through the clerk here. A formal acceptance needs to happen here. Is that correct, Tracy?
That's correct.
It is correct? And then we give it to the town clerk?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Justin.
And then the clock starts ticking once the signatures are verified as certified voters of the community.
Okay, so the town clerk's office has to certify?
Clarification, I have the law quoted here. The clock starts ticking once the request has been submitted.
We have to, the town clerk has to confirm that those are legally registered voters of the community.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yep.
I understand that. So, back up to make sure that we confirm receipt.
Just vote. Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion. Motion to accept the special town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will leave the cover letter.
Actually, can you give it to Julie?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like Justin said, this was a first. Is it a first for the town of Newbury?
We'll have to ask the town clerk.
So, that's why we, you know, didn't know we were supposed to get it.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Going once?
Yes, I have one.
You want to get up and stand over there?
Do I have to?
No.
You never should.
If you're going to speak to the public.
I think this is another first.
Another first. This really isn't worth it. I just meant to inform people that it's a tragic day in Newbury when this early I had the first green head. Sorry.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, thank you.
Did it fly again?
No, but it was, man, if you love the outdoors, green heads are coming.
You sure it was a green head or was it a deer?
That's climate change, because it's really early. It's warming water.
Okay, so, next item on the agenda is report of the chair. I signed the VW 2225 for Staples, 2226 for North of Boston Add, and payroll 2224 for Julie O'Brien. I also want to report to the select board that, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to drive by Manter Field or the Newbury Rec Fields, the Eagle Scout that was here that requested that we approve the black hole is up and it's flying.
Haven't seen it.
It looks great. So, if you could go by and see it, that would be great. Have you had a chance to go by yet, Jerry?
I've gone by, but I didn't, I'm looking in the road, not the field.
Yeah, if you go by, it's really nice. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up to everyone is that on Saturday, the town of Newbury is going to be hosting its first-ever Newbury Town Day event that has activities all over the town. It's in Byfield, Plum Island, in High Road. The day starts with a Boy Scout breakfast from 8:00 to 10:30 a.m. at the Byfield Community Arts Center. There is a story walk that is being conducted at the Newbury Town Library, and it's all day. I'm not quite sure if it's going to be as early as 8:00 a.m., but it says all day here. There's going to be, the Byfield Firehouse Station is going to be open between 12:00 and 4:00, and it's actually the 100th anniversary of the Byfield Firehouse also, as well. And so, they're going to celebrate, they're going to have a food truck there, and they are going to have a bouncy house, and they're going to have tours open for the Byfield Firehouse, and that's from 12:00 to 4:00. There's going to be, from 1:00 to 4:00, Jeanne Anderson is going to be at the Newbury Library talking about natural landmarks. The Council on Aging is going to have an open house to show us the new facility downstairs, and that's between 10:00 and 1:00.
Correct.
Tracy, is that correct? 10:00 and 1:00. So, if you're around and you want to take a look in, I don't think they'll be moved in yet, but you can see the space. At the Byfield Community Arts Center Saturday evening, the Revel Up Band is going to be performing from 7:30 until 10:00. On Plum Island, we have a resident that is going to be at the Plum Island Second Parking Lot from 9:30 to 10:30 that's going to be talking about New England's first flying field. That's home to the town of Newbury. There's going to be music at Georgie Porgie's at the beachfront from 12:30 until 3:00. On High Road at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm, that's going to be pretty much ground zero or ground central for Newbury Town Day, and that's going to be, the welcome table will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. There's going to be family fitness fun from 10:00, 10:30, and 11:00. There's Stories for Children at Spencer Pierce from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. There's a vintage baseball game that's going to be happening from noon to 3:00 p.m. If you've never seen one of those, they're really cool. There is an all-around town. It's going to be an interactive theater experience from the kids at the Theater Workshop Program, and that's going to be going from 3:00 to 3:30, and that's going to be at Spencer Pierce. And then from 4:00 to 5:30, there's going to be an old-fashioned square dance also at Newbury Town, at Spencer Pierce Little Farm. They've hired a caller and everything. It's going to be a real, like, a real square dance. There's going to be open studios on the Lower Green. The artists, our local artists of town, are going to be setting up tables and stuff along the Lower Green to show what they have. Margaret Russell is a local artist. She's going to, she sponsored that event. She's going to set up down there. The police station here is going to be open from noon to 1:30, Patty, is the police station, and the fire station is going to be noon to 1:30 as well, and on Morgan Ave, anybody that wants to tour those two buildings can. Then there's the Fire Museum that's also going to be open from noon until 3:00 on Saturday. Their historic New England has graciously opened up their homes, the Spencer Pierce Little Farm, the Coffin House, and the Sweat Isley House. The Coffin House and the Spencer Pierce Farm will be open from 11:00 to 4:00, and they're going to be free to Newbury residents. So, anybody that wants to go walk through them, if you've never had a chance, this is an opportunity. And the Sweat Isley House is going to be open from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., again, free to all of Newbury residents. The Newbury Historical Commission is going to give site tours of the schoolhouse down at the Lower Green from 11:00, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00, and then the First Settlers Burial Ground from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00. There'll be a closing ceremony from 6:00 to 6:30 p.m. at, I believe that is, on the Upper Green. So, looks like a great, a great day if you're around. Hopefully, it won't rain, and please come by. There's also a local resident, that, a local high school student, that put on, put together a video about how beautiful the town of Newbury is, and he's given it to the town to air on the Town's Channel, and I'm hoping that it's going to get pushed out through social media. So, please share that when you see it. His name is Braden McDonald, and he put together a really cool drone shot video of Newbury, Old Town, Byfield, and Plum Island. And, any questions from the board? I'm hoping if you're around, you could pop over and volunteer. There's some, on the website is thenewbertownday.com is the website, and they have open slots if you want to volunteer for do traffic or wherever you want it. There's just slots, you can just click in and, you know, it really does take a village, so.
Is that where the official schedule is?
Yes, everything is on that site. Thanks, Michelle. You're welcome. And that's it. So, moving down on the agenda, we have grants, gifts, and donations. We have none. We have no public hearings. So, under new business, I have to renew a business license for Geraldine Door. It's the Geraldine Madigan Door Trust, doing business as Wheelhouse Parking, 49 Northern Boulevard. The parking lot is a popcorn machine and slush machine water.
Motion to accept is read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Request for public property use, American Hand Fire Engine Society, Newbury Green, the old-fashioned fireman's muster. I believe that's July 30th.
Motion to accept is read.
Can I just mention, that one, they would like to waive the umbrella insurance, which is what we've done for the past, and we also will ask them to sign any participants, the consent and release form that was in the packet. So, I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Okay, so, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I moved a second. Okay. Questions?
Yeah, this, you can probably, the second page of that is, I'm, you know, I'm kind of new with this, but the second page doesn't have anything on it.
No, that's a blank form. They would have to fill this out.
So...
Once we agree to it.
Okay, so, we agree to it, then they fill it out.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Exactly. So, they've done this in the past. Yes. Several other organizations have done this in the past.
So, do you need two motions to waive the umbrella insurance?
Yes.
And then...
Yeah, so, let's, we, let's accept it, and then we will waive it.
Motion to accept.
Okay, so, we've accepted this request for public property use. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, I'll entertain a motion to allow them to fill out the consent and release form.
Sure, you want to do it?
Yeah, I move to allow them to waive the umbrella insurance liability.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else needed, Julie, for that?
Nope, that covers it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, we have a one-day liquor license for the BCAC Newbury Town Day Rev Up Concert on June 18th. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept is read.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a one-day liquor license from North Shore Bartending for a wedding at Governor's Academy on June 18th.
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Again, because I'm new.
Definitely.
This first one for, for the one that we're voting on right now?
Yep.
And then the very next page is going to be the next one? Why are those two different? Why are they not the same form?
Next one are you talking about? BCAC or the wedding?
Um...
I think they're the same. Are they different? I didn't notice. They look like the same forms. The one-day liquor license form, is that what you mean? Maybe just because of the scanning, do they look different?
I can show you. So, we have this one here.
This is for the Byfield.
Byfield.
Community Arts Center, yeah.
And then we have, we have this one here.
This is page two, I think.
This is page two?
Yep, and this is the stage.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, see?
Sorry.
That's okay. Then it goes, here's page one.
And then this is the next one.
Yeah, page two.
And I stay at page, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, we had discussion. Any other, for any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is request to grant permission to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Accept request.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Tom Hughes here. Hi, Tom. Okay. Would you mind coming up and explaining to the board?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the selectmen. Tom Hughes with Hughes Farm Consulting. So, Sea Shanty LLC, which owns the property, 333rd Street, has parked in 33rd Street for, you know, 100 years or so, but they've been asked by the town to stop doing that, as has been happening on Plum Island on some of those ways. So, well, first of all, I'll show you the aerial. So, this is, this is the property. This is the, the area where they used to park.
Yeah, hold on one second, Tom. Jerry, can you see?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
And what we're looking to do is put a driveway in here, and in order to do that, to get it to work safely...
How come they're not parking where they used to park?
Because they used to park in 33rd Street.
The right-of-way.
Within the right-of-way.
That was in, okay, that was in 33rd Street.
Right, right. So, what we are looking to do is put in a two-car drive.
Yep.
Conservation allows them to have two 9-by-18 spots in this floodplain, so we're limited to two spots. And in order to get this to work, rather than having people back out onto Northern Boulevard, we're looking to make a small improvement just past the little paved square that goes around the sewer. You know how, out on Plum Island, on some of the roads, there's a paved square around the sewer van holes?
Yeah.
What we need to do is just extend the improved portion of 33rd just a little bit so that a car can back out and then drive back. So, in order to do that, we'll need to get a right of entry from this board after we get our conservation approval, but since you own 33rd Street, we need your permission as part of our application, just, we need your permission essentially to file a notice of intent with Conservation so we can get those approvals from Conservation. Then we come back to you to get the right of entry, at which I understand we have to agree to, you know, various restrictions and requirements for doing work in the road. And nothing we're doing is going to make the road less passable. If anything, it'll make it more passable for people at that end. So, we're just converting a little bit of it to gravel that isn't currently developed.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
This Sea Shanty LLC, what kind of business is it?
Well, it's a family enterprise.
We are Sea Shanty LLC. We're sisters.
Okay.
It was our family's house, and when both my parents died, we were advised to make it an LLC. It's also, my brother, who's in Michigan, he allows the front part for us, so.
So, it's a residence, even though it's just LLC?
It's a residence. Yes, it is. The whole idea is that, going forward, our children, there will be an operating agreement that basically lays out specifically the time each is allotted. It's basically simple so that the transfer of the property and the allowances for our kids.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
I get you. Thank you.
And I think it's that one family that has been doing the parking there for close to 100 years, so.
Yeah, my family bought it in the early '50s, and my parents parked along 33rd without incident for all of that time, and... It wasn't 33rd Street, though. Yeah, they made it into... They've owned it since 1951, so, back then, it was just the road in. In fact, our address was Northern Boulevard, not 33rd Street. And then when the town converted everything, we still parked there, having no idea that it was a right-of-way until the police chief let us know.
Thank you.
So, we're looking to fix that.
Any other questions?
I just have a couple of questions, and it's, and this is purely engineering, and it's only for my thought process.
Yeah, 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 sure.
The French drains, where are the French drains gonna drain to?
Oh, just right into the ground. Sand, the sand out there.
Like, they're gonna leach into the ground?
Yeah, what we're trying to do is be sensitive to the neighbor. There is a slope that comes from this house down. It's the backside of the dome.
And you don't, yeah, I understand, yeah, that's, that's nice.
And out at, you know, first of all, more than likely, if we don't put that in, the water's just gonna go into the ground. But just to be extra cautious, putting that stone there. You guys did the same thing, and I can't think of the street. We did that, I didn't do the permitting on it, but you did the improvements.
Why can't I remember, why can't I remember the name of the street either? Right where the.
Yeah, it was on, so you did something similar on Old Way.
Yeah.
Old Way, where the pump station is.
It's where the last five or six years have been like dog years. It seems like it was forever ago.
On the plan, on the existing building, it's, it's actually on Northern Boulevard, that the existing structure right there?
Yeah.
There's a thing, it's called a footpath. You see where the footpath is? On there? It's between the, yeah.
Yeah.
And then connected to that, it says wood something, and it goes, it's, the driveway sketch is blocking that off. Do you know what that says?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's just a walk.
Just a wood walkway?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other thing I noticed is, it's interesting to me, the city in Newbury doesn't know where the utilities actually are located. And, and, and I read that they might be an issue with the depth that you're gonna dig to put the driveway in, and you're not sure where or when you're gonna hit the utilities.
So what if you.
Do we have any information on that?
So there are sewer tie cards for every piece of property, and they remind me of back when I used to teach at Triton, and kids would have study cards on index cards, right? So some of them are more detailed than others. So I think that's just a disclaimer that the surveyor and the engineer put on probably every plan they do out there. And I think it really is just kind of a little signal to the guy in the excavator, just be careful.
DigSafe would have to get involved.
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, but they'll, they'll put a stripe on the ground, right?
Yeah.
But they don't give you the depth.
Okay.
So what, what they're basically saying is, you know, and we're not really doing much cut here. It's, it's mainly adding material and a surface, but we are gonna be pushing material around, and you just want people to be extra careful, because, you know, it'd be a real bad day to break into a sewer line.
Are those, are those sewer lines cast, or are they plastic?
I think they're plastic.
So nothing picks, nothing, you can't pick them up with anything?
Well, but they know where they, I mean, they, they know where the manhole is, right? And they know where it comes into the house, and they'll, they'll go out and paint. And I think, I think they can do crude locating of it.
Well, I'm more worried about the gas line.
Yeah, the gas line is easily detected when they come out and do DigSafe. They, they, they have gas line detectors.
Okay.
That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Jeff, do you have any questions?
No.
Any further questions?
I have one. So the, the abiders, they haven't been notified of this. They will when it goes to.
When we, right, if, if you grant the permission for us to file a notice of intent, as part of the notice of intent process, they get a full notice.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question.
Motion to grant the request for notice of intent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I think it's all good. I mean, what you're, what you're doing by granting the request is allowing it to go through the process, and if there's anything that doesn't work, it's gonna be shown in the process. So.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay. All business, we have none. Town administrator's report. Oh, sorry, review and approve and sign the fiscal three appointments. I just went right past that. Okay, so let's just start. I'm just gonna take them one at a time. For the agricultural commission, we have a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2025. John Newtile, can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Borders to Boston Trail Committee, this is a one-year term, commencing on 7/1/2022 and ending on 6/30/2022. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
In a second.
Are you gonna read them? No? All right, motion to accept.
Oh, I should read them, sorry. Martha Taylor, Steve Fram, Cynthia Raschke, and Ted, Ted Russell.
Motion to accept.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Conservation Commission, it's a three-year term, 7/1/22 to 6/30/2025. We have Anthony Conti, Robert Connors, and Diane O'Brien. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council on Aging, we have a, a.
Damon Jesperson.
Yeah, this is a one-year term, 7/22 to, to 6/30/2023. Damon Jesperson and Susan Grillo, can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed, let's do it again. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Three, and then one opposed. Okay. Cultural Council, a three-year term, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2025. Bart Bracken?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our executive administrator to the select board, it's a one-year term, 7/1/22 to 6/30/2023, Julie O'Brien?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Election workers, it's a six-month term, well, almost, not quite, six-month and two-week term, from 6/14/2022 to 12/31/2022, Richard Keys, 38 Parker Street, and Barbara Murray, 12 Columbia Way. Can I?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We have the Finance Committee, a three-year term, from 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2025. We have Jean, Eugene Case.
Motion to accept.
Look, hold on, Thomas Marsh, Thomas Howard, Marshall Jesperson, and Susan Neuss. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. One name, Susan Neuss.
Do you want me to take them one at a time, Jerry?
I don't care. After you.
Okay. Historical Commission, three-year term, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2025. Jan Flores and Eva Jackman?
Motion to accept.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Resources Board, three-year term, 7/1/22 to, 22 to 6/30/25. Diane Doyle, John Nelson Ferrara, and Anthony Antico.
Motion to accept.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hermac Valley Planning, one-year term, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2023.
Martha Carol, Long Smurfy, motion to accept.
Motion to accept, and then a second?
Second.
Right, discussion. Jerry?
This, this is the second appointment for Ms. Taylor. She's here in the audience. I, I just don't wanna overburden you. You know, you, you, you're okay with being on these committees?
I am, thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, all right.
That, that one's.
You must've seen her office.
Jerry?
Yeah.
That one's probably the more fun one, right? My, Hermac Valley Planning, it's kinda, yeah.
It's all part of your job, it ain't so fun.
Well, it's interesting, it's interesting. You've been on there quite a while.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we have the Municipal Vulnerability Task Force. This is a one-year term, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2023. I, I just wanna explain what this task force does. It's tied to grants, I believe. Tracy, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, and Martha. We need to have a appointed task force, so that when opportunities come for these types of grants, we ready to move on them quickly. Is that true or false?
That's true, but there's a little more to it relative to sea level rise.
Right, okay, so I guess, Martha, do you wanna come up and explain? What it is?
Martha, explain the whole thing.
Yeah.
In 10 words or less.
Yeah, right, that's the challenge. And we established the Municipal Vulnerability Task Force a few years ago in relation to the Municipal Vulnerability Planning Program, which is related to sea level rise. But I think in addition to that, the people who are on it, we're gonna be, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we're also gonna be starting an update of our regional hazard mitigation plan, or hazard mitigation plan for Newbury as part of the regional one that MVP C will be doing. So this is also dealing with, with that, you know, advisory to the, the hazard mitigation planning.
And this group, a lot of this group was involved in the study for Plum Island too, right?
Some, some, not all.
Some people were.
There's a lot of crossover. There is a lot of crossover.
And then that planning that we did at the refuge, all that sighting of all the places with.
That was this. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All the places that are vulnerable within our community. And for other towns, not like ours, for instance, in Glossy, you have the sewer treatment plant, and all those things that are really low. And we're kinda like, Newbury's sewer septic system is low, although they've taken a lot of precautions to protect it.
And there is grant money, isn't there opportunities for grants?
Yes, there's a grant, there's a grant round every year. So the study that we did last year was funded through this, and Jeff's right, there was a number of people who were on it.
You work with FEMA a lot, don't you? The Federal Emergency Management?
Work with, work with all the agencies, actually.
Yeah. As Tracy said, there is a lot of crossover, so that, a lot of that actually comes to the, the police, I think, for some of the grants and stuff as well. So.
Newbury, let's face it, guys, except for Old Town Hill, a lot of Newbury is subject to flooding. I mean, even parts of Byfield because of rivers and things.
Oh, I think Jerry knows that.
Yes, I do. I watch the river rise.
Yeah, yeah, just remember, you weren't there for Mother's Day, right?
No, I was, I was there. But the people we bought the house from, that was a weekend they chose to move in.
And they were okay, right?
They were fine, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, Martha. All in favor?
I think we, I don't know if we did a motion for that one. I don't think we did a motion.
I'm not gonna vote on this one, can I? Because I'm on it.
Well, you can, this three of us, you can abstain. So this is a motion to accept the one-year term for the Municipal Vulnerability Task Force, to include Tracy Blaze, Doug Janvern Jr., John Lucy, Peter Burnett, John O'Connell, Samantha Holt, Deborah Rogers, James Saret, Martha Taylor, and Jeff Walker. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
And a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I make one, one last, one last? We should really recognize John O'Connell, right, Martha, for all he's done, for all the stuff, and especially stormwater management in our town. John is an engineer, and he gave countless hours, right?
Absolutely.
And, and I'm gonna forget the young lady's name that worked with John for so long.
Kristen Grubbs?
No, Kristen Grubbs too.
Oh, no, you're talking about Yvonne.
Yvonne, yeah. Those saved us an awful lot of money. Just were great people to do that.
Yeah, they, they really spearheaded our whole, and thus for compliance.
And that could've been a tough, that could've been a long haul. Did a great job. Thanks to John.
Thank you, John. Okay, the Newbury Improvement Trust Fund Trustees. This is a one-year term for Lynn Kettleson from 7/1/2021 to 6/30/2022.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open Space Committee, one-year term, 7/22 to 6, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2023. Martha Taylor, Mike Carboni, McDonough Scant Scanlon. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Martha, you're on this one too.
To answer, Jared, to answer part of your question too, a lot of this really overlaps with responsibilities I have in my job, so it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you again.
I just wanted you not to be an indentured servant and, you know, be okay with it.
I appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Planning Board Associate Member, it's a one-year term, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2023. The Planning Board took a vote and wanted Mary Stone to be there on June, the Planning Board took a vote on June 1st, and they recommended Mary Stone to the Select Board for appointment to this position. And I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to accept. I mean, motion, yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Committee, this is a one-year term. It's from July 1, 2022 to 6/30/2023. I'm gonna, this is, the members are Mark Sant, Mary Anastasio, are the two members of the board. And then there's also Jay Akolby is gonna step in for me as the Select Board Rep. Cindy Courier is the Council on Aging Rep. Ben Norton is gonna be our Triton High School Rep. He's a rising junior, and hopefully he'll stay on for two years. There are several, there's a few other members of the, of the committee that hasn't, missed the deadline to get their names back in, but I expect them, I expect to see more appointments on our next agenda. All in favor?
Yep, motion to appoint.
Well, actually, motion to.
Motion to appoint.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We have a special municipal employee consultants to the town. This is a one-year term. From July 1 to June 30th, we have Tim Meehan and Tom Hughes.
Motion to appoint.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Town Council, it's a three-year term, 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2025. We have Me, Talman, and Costa.
Motion to appoint.
On discussion?
And a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Um, we, I take it we're not going out to bid on, on this?
We did last, last time.
Okay. So, so, three, two, three years ago?
Three years.
Okay. So do we have, so we don't, we're not going out to bid? Do we, are we looking at any other law firms?
We haven't this time around, and I'll be honest with you. When we looked, when we did it three years ago? KP Law gave us a quote for it. But I'm concerned with KP Law, because they represent the town of Newbury. They, I'm sorry, they represent the city of Newbury Port, they represent Georgetown. And I think there would be a conflict if we went with another, with the same firm. Newbury Port, specifically Newbury Port worries me because of Plum Island, because of the water and sewer system, and there's all other kinds of stuff. I think we need to have an independent firm.
Right, so, but we're not looking for an independent firm, because I know there are many law firms who do municipal law besides.
Well, we, did we get a third quote last time?
Last, three years ago, when we went out, we got three quotes.
I forget who the third one was.
Ginny.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we got a single standing, you know, a single, what do you call them, a sole?
Sole practitioner.
Sole practitioner. KP Law and Me, Talman, and Costa. So, next, we'll have to go out to, again, we'll go out to bid next year, and hopefully we'll get options.
I would, it's a three-year term, so.
It's just three years.
Yeah, so the next, when this term is up, in three years, we can go back out to bid.
And, so the, so the contract is a three-year contract, so who negotiates that?
The contract terms would remain the same as the existing terms.
It was my understanding, nothing will change.
Okay. Thank you for any information.
Just a general question. Do any, are any of the contracts, are they not ended yet, and we're extending them? Or do we, are these all?
This is a three, everything ends on June 30th.
So, so this is all brand new?
Yeah, well.
You, you know?
You mean by brand new?
Well, I'm, I'm just, in other words, let's just talk about the Town Council.
Yeah.
Their contract is ending?
June 30th.
June 30th.
2022.
State and municipal stuff is June 30.
Okay. So it's not like it's still got two more years to go, but, but we're just, we're just pushing it out? That, that's my question.
Oh, good question, good question.
You know, and would we know that at the vote, at the voting time, whether we were doing that or not?
At the voting time of what?
Right, like right now, like, like, would it be on here, like, current contract until such and such, and we're gonna like push it out three, three more years?
That says the terms.
Right.
Yeah, I could add that on, if you.
I, I think that, it would help me, you know, and, and I wouldn't have to do the research of, of which ones are new and which ones were extending, kinda thing, you know?
I don't believe there's anything on here that we're extending tonight. They're all new.
Right. Yeah, they all, their terms are up, so to speak.
And the, and the reason it seems normal to us is we've.
You, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have the Zoning Board of Appeals, a three-year term. Eric Svahn is a three-year term from seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty twenty-five. We have Jack Kelly as an associate member for a one-year term, seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty twenty-three. And Michelle Wiedler, which is an associate member, a one-year term, seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty twenty-three.
Motion to appoint.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Police Department, we have one-year terms. Seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty twenty-three. I'm going to read, just read them down. Brad DeCenzo? DeCenzo.
You're Italian, you're supposed to know how to pronounce it.
C.I. is cheese, so. Brad DeCenzo, Reserve Police Patrolman. Theodore Dillon, which is a Reserve Police Patrolman. Peter Forgione, which is a Reserve Police Patrolman, did I say that right? Carol LaRocque, which is Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector. Martha Leahy, which is the Administrative Assistant. Martha Leahy is also the Police Department Chaplain. We have Michael Mahoy?
Mailhot.
Mailhot. Reserve Police Patrolman. Roger Mary, which is a Special Police Officer. Jay Ruthier, a Special Police Officer. James Malonis is a Reserve Police Patrolman. And Reed Wilson is an Assistant Animal Control Officer. Now, these are all one-year terms.
Motion to appoint.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Jerry?
Yeah. Since Deputy Chief Fisher is here, perhaps you can explain to me the difference between a Reserve Police Patrolman and a Special Police Patrolman Officer?
Certainly.
Thank you, Patty.
Patty Fisher with the Newbury Police Department Deputy Chief. So, a Reserve Patrolman actually works in the same function as a full-time officer. They're just, they work part-time hours for us. A Special Patrolman is usually a retired officer who was full-time, who works, can work details, traffic details, special events, but they're not working in a cruiser patrolling the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you. So, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have a three-year terms for the Police Department. This goes from seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty twenty-five. We have John Baker, which is a full-time Police Patrolman. Jason Decuna, which is a Police Sergeant. Nathan Hunter, a full-time Police Patrolman. Douglas Janvern, the Deputy Emergency Management Director? That's the Fire Chief, as well, he's being appointed as the Deputy Emergency Management Director. Stephen Jenkins is a Police Sergeant. John Lucy III is a full-time Police Patrolman. That's not the same as John Lucy II. Alexander McMullin, full-time Police Patrolman. Marx Miglielski, a Police Sergeant, did I say that right? Migelski. Stephen Smith is a full-time Police Patrolman. And Aaron Wachowski?
Wachowski.
Wachowski is a Police Detective Sergeant. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Patty? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, now, we see no old business, Town Administrator Report, Tracy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to let you guys know that our Shellfish Constable, who's been in the role for about seven years now, has been hired to fill the full-time DPW laborer position. He applied for that, so he'll be leaving his Shellfish Constable role. I've been in contact with Peter Fattino, who is the Chairman of the Shellfish Commission, and will be working with him, Chief Lucy, Deputy Chief Fisher, to kind of review the exist, the position as it currently exists today, with an eye towards considering what other municipal functions may make sense to consolidate it with. Once we've got a solid job description in place, then we'll be putting out the advertisement. But in the meantime, Chief Lucy has informed me that he has been in contact with the environmental police officers, notifying them that as of June thirtieth, effective June thirtieth, Paul will be leaving that position. So they're going to work with us to ensure compliance with the clam flats while we're hiring someone, so that's a little bit of a transition. Yes.
Tracy, I'd like to say how it was really, really fun working with Paul, because I kind of work with some of the clam commissioners and clambers, and Paul did a great job. And it was, I think it should be, you know, recognized that he was really good in his position. And the job now has become hard, because DMF is asking marine fisheries, which actually, you know, controls the ability for people to use the water to clam. It's getting harder and harder, Patty, so, you know, it's like, almost, you've got to think of it as, you know, hood milk. I think that's where they get their regulations from, it's a food source. So DMF is getting tough, so...
So, what do you think that, when do you think this position, like, what's your, in a perfect world, if you could wave a magic wand, when do you think you would hire?
It'll probably take us, I would say, two, up to two weeks to get the new job description in place, we'll get it advertised. I'm not sure how many people are going to have the requisite qualifications to... To serve in this role, as Selectman Walker noted, it's the regulatory aspect of the enforcement position is becoming more common.
That's a big concern of mine, and what's, what's that going to do for the industry?
I'm not an expert on that, I don't know.
Like, the clam, that won't, that won't affect them, their ability to clam, will it, Jeff?
You know, that, I don't have enough information to make a conclusive statement, but Tracy, as Paul transitions, like Patty's going to say something, as Paul transitions, maybe it would be possible for him to still at least advise and be, you know, because, you know...
I should have mentioned that he is going to be working with us to set forth all of the duties and responsibilities he has.
Yeah, maybe help out even...
He's been very gracious about assisting us.
Patty wants to fill in.
Come on up, Patty.
So, it's also my understanding that the reason that we requested the assistance from the environmental police was in an effort to keep the clam flats open.
Oh, sure.
So that we don't have no supervision down there, which would have, I believe, resulted in us having to close them.
It triggers the closure.
The chief has been working with the environmental police to make sure that they're able to do the regulations that we're talking about in the meanwhile, while we try to figure out who's the best fit and perfectly trained for that position and how to staff it. So, to answer the question of how will this impact the industry, we're hoping that there's going to be kind of a seamless transition while they supervise while we figure out what we're doing.
Beautiful.
Perfect.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
I don't want anything to disrupt them.
Yeah.
It's a goal.
Okay.
Also wanted to report to you that the library has been painted, and the new, the carpets have been replaced, so that, that project's done. Senior Center, the majority of the work has been completed, and we have officially been handed the keys. We are, however, waiting for furniture before we can officially transition the majority of the operation over to the new location. As you know, there've been lots of delays in supply chains, et cetera, so it's taken a little bit longer than we had hoped. The Conservation Agent is working on additional grant funding for the Lark and Dam Removal Project, where we've got our fingers crossed that we'll, we'll get some support there. Paving continues, the portion of Elm and Central Streets, beginning at Elm Street from School Street to the Georgetown Line, is next. And also Central Street from School Street to Elm Street will be done next. Finance Department, our focus right now is going to be all on year-end closing between, you know, June thirtieth and the end of July. We'll be spending most of our time wrapping up the fiscal year. You already noted Newbury Town Day, so that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, under Correspondence, we have a letter from Xfinity regarding revised information. We are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV series. Therefore, as a follow-up to our previous communication, please be advised with the following revised information regarding Xfinity Channel lineup in your community. On July eighth, twenty twenty-two, due to changes in business costs, AMC Plus On Demand will increase from $699 to $899 per month. Please do not contact, hesitate to contact me, karylmoreys@comcast.com, should you have any questions. Then we also have a second correspondence dated on May twenty-sixth, changes to service. We are committed to keeping you and your, our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services. Accordingly, please note, effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the subscription-only Russian-language channels, Channel One Russia, RTR Planet, Planet, Planeta, and Rosia twenty-four will no longer be available through Xfinity, and will be removed from any Russian-language packages. Customers are being provided this information via a bill message. And that's it for Correspondence. Any meeting updates? And so, review of meeting minutes. We have draft minutes from the May twenty-fourth Select Board Meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from five twenty-four twenty-two for approval.
And a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Lawrence, motion to sign Lawrence?
Second. All those in favor? Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Executive Session, so pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A seven, to review for approval and release the following executive session minutes in accordance with Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-two F and G, and to reconvene an open session to vote whether to approve and release said minutes. Executive Session on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy regarding litigation to wit Seacoast K-9 LLC and Jennifer Ford versus the Town of Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals at L. Land Court, Twenty-one MISC zero 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 six seven, concerning property at thirty-five Downfall Road, and subject to the chairperson's declaration that the holding of a discussion on this matter in open session would be detrimental to the public interest, and would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. So can I have a second on that?
Second.
I need, I guess I need a motion to move into Executive Session.
Motion to move into Executive Session. Do you need a second on that?
Yeah. Roll call vote. Alicia Greco, yes. Jay Akolby, absent. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Approve and release the minutes of twenty-three, February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one.
Can I have a second? I guess I'll take a roll call vote. Alicia Greco, yes. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Okay, so we have approved, and I entertain a motion to release the minutes of February third, Executive Session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Alicia Greco, yes. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
But I have to sign a bunch of stuff, right?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That comes now.